Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you to our council meeting on this November 16th. We want to welcome everyone that is also tuning in online electronically. Prior to this meeting, we had a workshop in which we discussed a potential boundary line adjustment and come to understand what that involves for us as a city. And so here we are. And we want to welcome everybody and I invite you to stand with me and repeat the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lori, would you see who's here?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Sperry.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Robinson.
Here.
All right, full attendance. Chief, Randy Thomas, would you give us a report on UPD, please?
It would be honored, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just earlier this week, I put out the UPD October statistics. Our caseload was 994 cases for the month of October. Last year, we did 990, so we're seeing a good trend, staying level, providing good service. 785 citations of those 73 were warnings, the rest were penalty citations. On the second tab of the monthly report, I included the financials. We're 33.3% into the year, and right now, we're at the precinct level, we're trending at 30.8%. So we're a little bit under budget, which is very good. I'd like to recognize the Metro Gang Unit, the Violent Crime Unit, as well as Major Investigation Unit, the Shared Services with assisting us on the tragic event that happened two Saturdays ago. We're in, at that wedding reception, there was a shooting and a homicide. I can tell you that they worked tirelessly identifying who the suspects were, eventually learned, getting intel that the suspects may be headed out of state. So some of the apprehension was handed over to the VFAST or the Marshals, and they assisted in the apprehension of, right now, at this point, we have three in custody. There is an outstanding person of interest, but I talked to Chief Chris Onby, who is over investigations just this afternoon, and they were screening the charges on those three that are in custody with the District Attorney's Office. So the ability to quickly wrap that up, identify the suspects involved, was admirable. It was a sad and tragic event, but we were able to wrap it up fairly quickly. And there was no immediate danger to the public. It was pretty isolated. I would like to also recognize, and I'm actually going to challenge the council, Choose Gang Free has set a goal of providing 150 holiday meals coming up at a price of $40 per family. Oh, my voice just got louder.
Wow.
And I was the first in our precinct. I also challenged those within our precinct to do the same. And of course, Lori was next on board. I know City Manager Matt Dahl has started a collection for Midvale City, but that $40 donation will handle an entire family, a pretty extensive holiday meal. And UPD has put out a little bit of a challenge between precincts. So if you do choose to donate, and there are Venmo options, please just put Midvale on that. I don't know what we'll get, probably a little traveling trophy, but I am competitive in nature, and I look forward to dominating the other precincts, or at least providing some good meals from some families. Choose Gang Free, if you're not aware, they operate within our junior, higher, middle schools, and really have a great ability to perhaps make contact with some of these kids that may choose a poor path in life and, at that age, are often able to mentor them into a better way of life or a better future. So I do have, I believe City Manager Matt Dahl gave you some QR codes if you choose to support us in that. And I'd challenge any of the public who is listening, I've asked Laura Magnus if she may share this on social media, and obviously, it's up to the city if they choose to do so. I'm very grateful to have participated in the Halloween Bash. That thing was beyond success. I never envisioned it being that much. I've never handed out that many UPD stickers in my life. And assuming we do it next year, I'll be, I'll have another case waiting. That was really good. I'm also looking forward to, on December 3rd, participating in the, where we shut down the Main Street again and light it up, light the tree, and it looks like a fun project. Once again, I'm going to harp on traffic safety. We've had the time change, it's dark outside, we're experiencing unusually warm weather, which is, as you know, last week, I was out in California, it was 91 degrees out there. I was actually jealous of the warm weather you had here because it was reasonably warm instead of too hot. But it's going to snap cold on us. I'm sure Glenn knows, we're going to start getting the water on the streets, the snow and ice on the streets. So I just harp on lookout for those pedestrians, they are hard to see, and hopefully, we don't have any tragic accidents. And lastly, I just want to recognize each of the council members, Mayor, City Manager, with the support for UPD. I realize it's hard bringing our compensation to a competitive level. It provides a burden on the city, but I am very appreciative of the support that you've given us and look forward to the vote the UPD will be doing this upcoming Thursday on upgrading UPD benefits and salary compensation. Any questions for me or concerns?
Do you have any info, maybe Chief Larson might have more of the house fire over here in the avenues on Sunday morning?
I have very little info on that. It made the Watch Command log when I was out of town, and it seemed to be isolated to mainly a garage. I know there were some concerns with adjacent buildings or structures, but beyond that, I don't have any details.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Larson, would you like to fill in a blank there?
Sure. Sure, I'd be happy to. I believe it was Sunday morning about 3:00, somewhere after 3:00 o'clock in the morning. The fire was in a detached garage between two homes, was 639, I'm thinking First Avenue, somewhere in there?
Third Avenue.
Third Avenue, yes, excuse me. And there was a relative living in the garage from one of the homes. The fire started in the garage, obviously. He came out, alerted the family, they got out of the home, the crew got there very quickly. It was fully involved when the crew got there, they were able to knock it down swiftly and save the two homes. And the one home that, I can't remember which side it was on, but they didn't have a report of anybody getting out of that home. So with the help of UPD, they were able to make entrance into the home, and nobody was there. The family was gone for the weekend or evening, I'm not sure. But fortunately, no one was injured. The crews were able to get there very quickly and knock it down. So the cause was under investigation, last I heard, and I hadn't heard of a cause of the fire. So I'm guessing, you know, with cooler nights, I mean, I don't want to make an assumption of what it was, but I'm sure it was accidental. So, that's it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Appreciate the work of UFA.
Thank you.
And UPD's assistance there, assuring we didn't have anybody trapped. Okay, the next section of our meeting is public comments. We invite anyone in the public that would like to comment to City Council to approach the microphone, state your name, and you've got about three minutes. And were there any online comments?
There were no online comments since you were, to the email address on the agenda.
Thank you. So anyone in the audience like to address the council?
You knew I was going to. Maureen Butler, 70 West, 7500 South. And I didn't think I'd come back because of my schoolwork, but my schoolwork has given me some interesting insights about this city. And I have a huge amount of stuff to do, and I'm not sure I can do it in the three minutes, so good luck. Here we go. I hope all of you got my email about something last week. And I want to thank Elizabeth Arnold for all the help that she's been giving me in, about Birch Street. The sideloaders are still coming down Birch Street off of the construction company that's on state. And the other day, we had a, we had an issue with the sideloader trying to go down the street with a cement truck. It didn't work, and that was kind of interesting to see what happened. So they stopped for a while, but they're back, and so we're dealing with the sideloaders again. I've noticed, because of the way that my class has gone, that the entrance signs into Midvale are pretty, Matt's going like this, so I guess he's doing the same thing. Some of them aren't there, some of them are really awful, some of them. It's just like, welcome to Midvale, you know, welcome to Midvale, I guess, is what it's like, coming off the I-25, I mean, the I-15 off-ramp on 7200 South. I don't know what to do about that, and I'm not sure how we could clean it up, but it's really, 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 really ugly. And all the garbage that's there, even coming around off of 72 on, by McDonald's. That Midvale sign is really nice, except you can't see it. And the, I'm excited about 7200 South and Third West. Score finally did not have that dip that's there. But like you were addressing the last time that I did listen, was the apartments right there, it's called, I don't know, Moda, whatever it's called.
Moda.
The parkings, well, you already know, you've discussed it before. And I'm not sure whether anybody can do anything about the TOD zones and all of the ones that want to build all of these huge apartment complexes. I don't know how you can make anybody take tracks, because that's what they're for. And you can give all kinds of free, but everybody's going to have a car. And I know that, you were talking about fees that they charge for parking. They rent the apartments, and then they charge a fee for a parking spot. And I know personally, because my daughter lives in one, that they not only have the fees, and the people that are living in the apartments park in the guest parking lot, so that you can't have guests, because they're all taken up by other. I was very disappointed to find out Hoppers was going to be gone, so that we can have Canes come in. And I hope the police are prepared, because I was out when daybreak opened, and it was insane. And it didn't go for just one or two days, it went for like weeks. And the traffic was horrendous for anybody going in and out of that. So I was wishing to express my disappointment on that one. The traffic's going to be awful, and I think that's all I can do. There's nothing I can say anymore, because supposedly, my time's up. And considering I'm the only public person out there that wants to talk, that's it. So I don't know whether there's any comments or anything that I can, but it's been an interesting event to watch. Like I said, I don't get to stay. I'm going to tell you about the ones that I could do for the public hearing, for the ones on Alabama. I'm grateful that they're going ownership, because Birch Street is, I already told you that in the email, so, okay?
Maureen, I agree with you. As far as our welcome to Midvale signs, you know, I've noticed that as well. The one that you mentioned on 7200 that's covered, you know, it looks nice when it's not, you know, hidden by shrubbery, which seems to be most of the year. But just in general, I agree with you that we can probably take a look at some of the signs that we have in different parts of the city and replace the ones that are just, you know, weather beaten, or sometimes car beaten.
Yeah. And it's just, it's kind of like housekeeping things.
Yeah.
And housekeeping things, like my house doesn't always get dusted where it should get dusted. But these are things where people are coming in, and I think about that when I come off 7200 South, how everybody's coming from the south and they're coming off that.
And if your first impression of a city is, well-
It's a wonderful impression, yeah.
Their sign is mangled.
One of those that you really want to be part of it, and you're going, okay. And if-
And just on the note with Alabama, that's the road that the sideloader comes down, right?
It comes down Birch.
Oh, Birch, that's right.
It comes down Birch.
I know Glenn would hate me for saying this, but is there a way we can put in some sort of traffic calming or something that'll make it so semi-trucks don't want to drive down that road? I mean, it would make it challenging for like a snowplow or something like that, right? But-
Is it a designated truck route?
No.
It shouldn't be. Can we enforce?
Yeah, that's-
We should be able to enforce not having semis come down that street. It's really-
Yeah, I think we should try enforcement.
I don't even know how they can turn into that parking lot, you know, to park that truck. Because I can, I love seeing them trying to go down Birch. I think it's hilarious, so, but it's, yeah.
It's a narrow street to start with. It's not even a full-size street, so if you, and they park cars on both sides of it.
They do.
No semis or big trucks, they shouldn't be going down it.
I said it was an interesting thing.
Matter of fact, we should post signs, I don't know if we have, but there ought to be signs, no trucks.
So, anyway.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen, I had a question for your email last week, as you were talking about the ADUs.
Uh huh.
Because I know you mentioned a lot of duplexes in that area, and the concern if they would get requests for an ADU. I mean, is that just for the single-family homes, or what's that involving?
The thing is, is their accessory unit, you know, like the new accessory thing law, some of them are already existing as that. Some of them aren't duplexes, but some of them are. So you've got all of Arkansas, which is duplexes. And on Maple, towards, by the back of the church, there's two of them there. But there's other homes that are, have like the accessories, so they have like basement apartments already. And as you go down Birch, there's multiple ones. And then on my street alone, because I've got them next door to me. Not that they've been, not that they've been legalized as far as that goes, but they're all up and down. And then I have two or three units that are duplexes or triplexes. So, yeah, so that's what I, they really are, and anybody wants, I can take you down my streets anytime. And let you know.
Yeah, from your email, when I read it, I know, I mean, with the, with the new law, you can only have an ADU in a single-family home. So as you were talking about duplexes and things, they wouldn't be able to have an ADU, but it sounds like some of them are a single-family home and have already done it.
And there's a new one that I know that's trying to get that accessory part-
Okay.
That is a single-family home that wants to make it into a double.
Yeah, now, we do-
And so.
Well, we did pass that, so if they want to do it, they have to address parking, right, Nate?
That's right.
So they, if they're going to do it, they have to have parking for that additional unit.
Yep.
And not, not on the street.
I was going to say, I already know about that, because, yeah, like I said, I've already got those units, and I already know what my street's like and-
Right.
What Birch is like. That's the only thing. So like I said, it's like the big, the big apartment buildings in the TOD zones.
Yeah, okay.
So, oh, and I can't say anything, because I'm, time's run out. Darn. Okay. Anyway, thank you for letting me talk, and I do have to go back and do my homework. Bye.
Good luck with your homework.
We're still in public comments. Anybody in the public would like to comment to the City Council, please come forward and state your name. Welcome to our firefighters. Good to have you, ladies and gentlemen, here.
Good evening. Stephen Brzezinski, I reside at 202 Cornell Drive in Midvale. I'd like to see about soliciting for a light trespass ordinance.
And would you explain what you mean by that?
Light trespass or nuisance. In other words, there's nothing on the books currently that if somebody has an over illuminated area of their property that is intrusive to other residents in the area?
A search light aimed at your house in other words?
Basically, yes.
I think we do have an ordinance, right?
Yeah, this has been adopted by several counties and cities. Weaver County recently adopted one in total for the county, as well as Cottonwood Heights.
Is there a house in your area that has a light?
That would be the nuisance.
Yeah, okay. I'll try to drive by it today.
Yeah, there's, there's currently nothing, nothing for single residency property. There is for multiple-unit zoning, but not for this. A very good comparative would be the light that's on the front of the police station here in Midvale. It's about 8,500 luminance, really excessive, so. That's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the City Council? All right. Seeing none, we'll now move to council reports, begin with Councilmember Paul Glover.
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Dustin Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge all of the folks who ran for office this cycle. Some of us up here, some of us in the audience. It was an interesting year, to say the least, for candidates, being ranked choice voting, and a lot of confusion around that in the beginning. In the end, I think it was a success. I'll speak for myself and my perspective on that. But I do want to thank personally my opponent, Wayne Sharp, who I thought might be here today, for running a good campaign. And I think we, you know, now we can kind of look at the numbers later tonight and, you know, see how ranked choice voting may have impacted this election or not impacted the election. I think it'd be nice to have that conversation, kind of do a after-the-fact overview of just the differences between the last few municipal elections. I did note, you know, in our mayor's race, we did have fewer voters this year in the mayor's races total, but in districts four and five, we've never had more votes. So in some ways, I guess it was a success. You know, probably could have done a better job getting people to vote in other areas of the city, maybe, but, you know, there's some good to take away from what happened this cycle, and there's some learning opportunities as well. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, over to Quinn Sperry now.
Yeah, just a few things, Mayor. One, on some traffic issues. I know one of the issues we've raised is the racing cars on 7800 South. They start over in Sandy Borders, so it's hard for our UPD to enforce, but it did hit the news that Sandy's going to start cracking down. And so, you know, Chief Thomas, thank you in advance for, I know you said that, you know, some of our units can coordinate with Sandy to enforce that, so, so I know that'll make many people on the east side happy. Another traffic issue is, I think the 700 and 900 East, isn't that a UDOT street on the east side? 700 and 900, so from Sandy, kind of right by Hillcrest?
Yeah, I believe that is state.
So I don't know if we need to raise something with them. There was another accident there today, pretty serious. They, Sandy Police, or Sandy Fire responded, not UPD. It's right on the border, but they had the jaws of life out. I think that's probably the fourth pretty serious accident just since school started. We're there, I don't know if people are, as it turns, they're just going straight, and we're getting some head-on collisions, but I don't know if we need to look at a traffic issue right there, a median or something, to try to prevent some of that. It's, it's right at the border where, I mean, there's the Harmins and that shopping center, and it's really right as you're passing that, and at the border of Midvale to Sandy, is where the accidents seem to be happening, so. And they're happening in the mornings, they're happening late at night, I mean-
I saw this morning, it was-
It was pretty bad, huh?
It was pretty crazy.
Yeah.
You can tell by the oil on the highway, it's still there.
Well, I think there was another one, like in the same spot last week. I mean, I was looking at it thinking, they throw out sawdust or whatever, I think it was, the sawdust was in the exact same spot. So it was spray, or maybe it was two weeks ago. I can't remember the times now, but, but it's, it just seems a little frequent that there's the accidents happening there. And then the last thing-
This is new-ish, I'm not as familiar with how often that those accidents happen. Are you saying this has always been, or that it's spiking?
No, yeah, it just seems to be spiking right now. I mean, over the years, there's always been some, and you have people, you know, they'll also go straight and go on into the canal, right? They miss that. I mean, that's happened a couple of times over the past years. I can introduce you to one of my neighbors who did that, so. He fell asleep at the wheel and woke up in a submerged car, so. It happens, you know, it's just kind of a, I mean, that's a one-off, right? Obviously, he fell asleep, but, but I don't know what it is there, we're seeing more accidents, so. The other thing is, last Friday, I attended a meeting at Hillcrest High School, which was, was really a parent and a football player meeting with administration from the district. You know, Mayor, you brought it up months ago, back in September, when our, the Hillcrest football team went down to Mountain View, and they, there were some unfortunate incidents there with, you know, some racial slurs and different things that happened. You know, I was not aware until Friday how much that's still been impacting our community, and, you know, really dividing many of our students and the parents and the administration at Hillcrest. Canyons has, you know, they, I've talked to members of it at the district, and they've done a very thorough investigation. You know, parents have, and players, they have some valid points of the experience they went through. And unfortunately, Alpine School District is taking no action against the people that did this to the students. So it's, again, just, I don't know what we can necessarily do from the city level, other than, you know, trying to reach out and support, you know, the, our students and the other people in the, in the community, and, and really just, you know, not standing and not supporting what they went through, so. But I was not aware of the lingering effects that that's been happening now for two months, so wanted to bring that up. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'll tell you, when I was a high school student, and I graduated in '66, so it would have been about 1964. Back in those days, 7th East did go through, and it had the curve to go up to 9th East. And our driver's ed teacher said, "I want all of you, go take a ride to a service station that was on 7th East in Sandy at the time, and check out a car." That car had been full of high school students and had missed that turn, and the guardrail over the canal had impaled right, right into the driver's side and taken two students right out through the trunk. And so we all went and checked out that car. And that's a life-changing experience in how one drives a vehicle. That's always been a dangerous curve. It's just gentle enough that it doesn't jar you awake like other curves do, but that's always been dangerous. And thanks for bringing that up. Councilmember Bryant Brown.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. It was announced today that the state has like a $600 million surplus or whatever, and I'm wondering if we can, you know, leverage our representatives or lobbyists or whatever to try to at least get some of the money we need for our homeless shelter before, and I'd like to, you know, if we can engage those conversations as soon as possible, because I'm sure everyone, $600 million could be spent very quickly, I'm guessing, between everyone's pet projects, but it's a need, and we kind of got rejected, I guess, the last meeting, so if we can, if we could jump on that, I think that'd be, that'd be great. The construction super-
I think Wayne Niederhauser is eyeballing five of that for the homeless cities, cities of homeless shelters.
That'd be great, if we can get that, you know, for us. The construction on 7200 South is super weird, where they're putting in the, that, they're fixing the intersection, right? Someone, I had a few people email me and say, "Hey, they're not like telling you it's, it's closed or anything." So the other night, I went by to see, and you can drive right up, you could drive up right to it, and there was no like detour signs or anything, and, and so people were just like cutting through the gas station parking lots. So I just would like to make sure when someone's doing construction, you know, it would have been great if they had like road closed before you turned, you know, there or whatever. So it was kind of like, it was poorly done as far as signage goes on the, on the construction. Like, some people were driving in and out of one lane, but there was nobody there to like sort of control traffic. I'm surprised we didn't have a wreck or anything, so it was really weird. Maybe that's a one-off, but it seemed pretty poorly done by the state. And, and ever since- And ever since Councilman Glover mentioned the cost of parking at that, at that mod, I've decided to drive by it at night, and it's interesting, they have a ton of parking. Everyone's parking now on the, on the south side where a bunch of semi-trucks used to park, and I'm sure all those semi-truck drivers probably hate it now. Not that, you know, that matters to me too much, but the parking lot's empty underneath. You can look right through it at night, and there's, I mean, I would say seventy percent of the parking is available underneath, sixty to seventy. So I'd really like to work on making sure our ordinance supports the parking of the unit, because it's totally unfair that, you know, they can come and say, "We need it, but no one's using it," so then they're trying to, you know, park, you know, everywhere else. It's really goofy, so I'm not a big fan of how that's playing out of that property at this point.
I agree with you. Our ordinance needs to say, "This parking, you have to provide it and at no cost," because otherwise it forces everybody out on the street. And that's not right at all.
Yeah, just the city's paying for it, you know, in, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Heidi?
I have nothing tonight, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. On my remarks, I want to report on the Utah Homelessness Council. On November ninth, Wayne Niederhauser is going to request five-point-seven million dollars out of that six-hundred million, or other resources, but to put that much more into the homelessness services. As of this year coming up, Midvale will receive the twenty percent, which we have traditionally received out of the sales tax for homelessness. South Salt Lake will get double that, and then the remaining forty percent in the grant or in the municipality fund will be divided up among other cities that have homelessness shelters, Ogden, Salt Lake City, St. George, am I missing one? There's five of them. And then the problem we have as a city is that we are receiving seventeen percent less funds from the state than we received in fiscal twenty, which amounts to over two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars, which we would use to fund the law enforcement in the area of our homeless shelter. And that forces our citizens and businesses in Midvale to pick up that tab, and, which we're grateful to do, we're glad we can do it, but it's considerably less than we received as this program began, whereby we accepted a homeless shelter into this city. And Midvale was excluded from the grant funding because our request was tied completely to law enforcement, when other cities mentioned law enforcement and received funds for law enforcement, but we didn't. And so we're going to work on that. Homelessness, the state has three goals, to make it rare, and their statistics show that there was a twenty-one percent decrease in people experiencing homelessness since fiscal seventeen. To make it brief, the goal is to average less than fifty days in homelessness services, but last year, the average was sixty-six days, so we've gone out through the top of that particular matrix. And the third is non-recurring, that the goal is ninety-three percent obtain housing, and we've actually, in last fiscal year, got that up to ninety-five percent have received housing. And the goal is to reduce returning homelessness of twenty-nine percent, and we achieved that as a state. So in some cases, we're winning, some cases, it's a draw, and other cases, we're losing. And it's a constant effort by the state of Utah, the municipalities, and agencies that service homelessness, to make sure that homelessness is addressed and correctly so that it does become rare, brief, and non-recurring. I attended the UFA meeting this morning, and it appears that we're looking at member fees being increased five-and-a-half percent for the next year, which we're grateful to have a UFA force protecting our buildings from people. We saw and experienced Chief Brad reported on a request already this morning, or this evening, for an instance where you came and helped in a structure fire in the Avenue section. UFA is currently hiring and training sixteen new firefighters, which we're grateful for, because that reduces the overtime cost for providing that service. UFASA will likely have a property tax increase in fiscal twenty-four, because in projecting their revenues, they expect that they will fall below the minimum of fifteen percent retention in their budget by fiscal twenty-four. So we can probably look for some increased fees then to maintain that fifteen percent or more budget excess. I also want to congratulate the election winners. Bryant Brown, he had a tough race. Congratulations to Bryant. Dustin Gettle also was successful in his race, and Marcus Stevenson, who's here in the audience, and we want to congratulate him on his race for mayor. We'll find out the numbers here in a few minutes. Paul, I will be out of town on the twenty-third to the twenty-eighth, and you'll be mayor pro tempore.
Okay.
During that period. That concludes my remarks. So we will go to city manager report.
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Then we'll go to department reports and invite Mariah Hill to report on administrative services, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry. It's okay. My bad. There it is. Always pretty simple for me, from the court. Had seven-hundred-and-ninety-six claims filed in October, which was a fifty-eight percent increase from October of last year, COVID-related increases. And we have a new judicial assistant who started a couple of weeks ago, Melinda, who's doing a great job. For IT, they completed their off-site storage project.
Screen up here, brought up to speed.
Sorry. I can't see that one. Is it?
That match now?
Okay. Off-site storage, which Matt Pierce has told me is the greatest, maybe the greatest accomplishment of his time at Vineyard, because it means that we have really meaningful backups and we're more secure in the case of attacks or anything like that. So he's really stoked on that one. And the security cameras are installed at the park, but we're just waiting on bandwidth and configuration, so they're not fully functional, but they are installed there. And we have a new IT technician, Josh, who you've seen a couple of times here, who's doing an awesome job. We've, IT worked hard with HR and city recorder to make sure that the grammar request, new electronic grammar request form is now live, and we're using that. And then IT also completed ninety-four HelpDust tickets in October, which I think just showcases the awesome customer service they give to other Midvale employees. In finance, we've, we're running equal pay enrollment, is currently open for the month of November, and we're working on our year-three meter change-out list. They've only completed about a hundred-and-seventy of those a thousand, so they assure us they'll still be done by the end of the year. They had some technicians out hunting, and so there was a little delay on that. Our purchasing agent has put up our first RFP on U3P for the basketball court, which closes Thursday, and has been an exciting part of her job to do that. And then we're just continuing to work with auditors on year end. In utility billing, there was a decrease in revenue from October of last year, which was just a decrease in usage for the drought and things like that. And then there's just less info than usual on our reasons for the estimated reads due to having staff out for COVID, so. That's it, any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going now to enter into our public hearings, and so I'd like a motion to open a public hearing.
May I motion we open a public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to begin our public hearings. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, we're now in a public hearing. The first one is to consider the Heiner Land Company request for a final subdivision approval for the Heiner Townhouses, Town Homes, a proposed five-unit residential development on zero-point-two-nine acres located at Fifty-One West Alabama Drive in a transit-oriented zone. And Elizabeth, come on down, Elizabeth Arnold.
Thanks. Okay, so this is for a final subdivision. You all have probably seen it in preliminary and at other steps along the way, but it's located just kind of in that corner off Center and State Street, just tucked back in there on Alabama. So this is just a subdivision plot that will allow for individual ownership of the townhomes that were already approved, so it's just splitting those lots and allowing for individual ownership of the units. And then the recommended motion and conditions have remained the same as were included in your summary report.
Any questions on this item?
The one thing that came out of this that I think was good, that's unrelated to this property, is we found out about those side loaders driving down as a city, right? And the developer unfortunately got the blame, which I would have as well, right? Like, as you think that. So this is one of those instances where I think some residents were sort of upset with the process, and then when they realized it wasn't necessarily the developer, they seem less, you know, upset with it. So I'm glad that this project's going in, that it's these four sale units, and I'm also glad that we figured out there's a way we can maybe fix some of the heartache that the residents deal with, so, you know, I'm glad that we have this going on right now.
Any other comments or questions? All right, then, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience who would like to address this issue on the Heiner Land Company? You're welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and your comments. I see no comments.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close a public hearing. Any comments or questions on that motion? All in favor? Say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing on this item's closed. Now entertain a motion on this action item.
Mayor, I move that we approve with conditions the final subdivision for the Heiner Town Homes located at Fifty-One West Alabama Drive, consistent with the findings and conditions noted in the summary report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Rory?
Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next public hearing is to consider a final plat for Jordan Bluff's second amended subdivision located at approximately Seventy-Eight Sixty South Bingham Junction Boulevard. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this item.
Mayor, I move we open a public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now in a public hearing to consider this Jordan Bluff's second amended subdivision. And I show Adam Olsson. Come on down, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the final plat for the Jordan Bluff's second amended subdivision. It's approximately a hundred-and-seventy-eight acres altogether. There was a preliminary plan and an associated right-of-way vacation that occurred in, I believe it was July of 2020. There's been some work on the slopes, which is largely finished, and that's why the final plat is before you tonight, it is ready to move forward. There are notes on the final plat that every additional phase of development needs to go through basically the corresponding requirements in the development code as far as site plans or large-scale master plans or additional subdivision if necessary. So here is the final plat, north is to your left on the screens. Again, there was an associated right-of-way vacation which occurred last year as, with the preliminary plan, and planning staff would recommend approval. The motion is on the screen before you. There are findings and conditions in the staff report as well. I can answer any questions.
So what's their, what's the next steps as far as building? You know, I was under the impression, I thought at least, that the second half or the residential is where I think that's this area, right? Is this the residential?
This is the entire site, so the portion that's under construction is part of this plat as well.
Are there, is, because the Zion's Bank is obviously, or that building is well underway, but, you know, have they indicated their next steps, when they'll break ground for anything else, or what's, like, it feels like we sort of, you know, I don't want to say rush, but we kind of moved quickly, you know, like two years ago, I think, now, because we were still in person when we voted for it, and so we went through the entire COVID process, right, without it. So I'm just curious if we have an update or anything on?
They're here and they can address that. We don't have any active or pending applications in the planning department for additional phases yet, but I know they're here and can address that.
Would representatives from Zion like to come up and just give a brief overview of what is in store?
Thank you. We're representing Gardner.
Give us your name.
Howard Cook, representing the Gardner Company. We are anxious to get started, I think our, excuse me, I think our first step was just getting this, obviously getting this plat well underway, and I don't want to give you an exact timeline right now, because I wouldn't want to have to push that back or whatnot, but we are working like every day in terms of trying to get closer to this whole as a master plan, but we want to do it very cautiously and very tactfully, so we're trying to make sure that there's a really holistic approach to it. But we are, we are working towards getting that underway, and we appreciate the speed to which we were able to get this plat to this, this stage, and appreciate the city's help on that.
Yeah, I guess my, I appreciate that, I'm not trying to push or anything. My concern was, and I mentioned this two years ago, was the longer it takes to build that park, the more expensive it will be to build that park, and you guys put a dollar amount on what you'll put into the park, and that is worth significantly less today, you know, by double-digit percentage than when we voted on it, which was a major concern. And if we wait two more years, I mean, I, we'd be lucky to get sod with the dollar amount, right? So that's, even though it's funny, because I laugh at it, it's also true, right?
No, you're very.
It's going to be crappy, you know, and so I just want to know what the plan is.
One thing I would do want to add is, we actually have, everything you're saying, I agree with. The one thing that we were seeing as being a challenge, there was an initial plan earlier on that was. initial plan earlier on that was going to have the first phase tied in with, with Zion's that was going to, I don't remember the exact size, but it was going to be fairly large. And our concern was that we were going to have a bunch of space that we were going to be maintaining without a lot of use. So we're trying to find, we've been working with Gardner in order to try to find this balance between what the right thing is in that Phase One and not creating a bunch of additional costs to Midvale during a period of time where the resources might not be as heavily utilized. And, but I absolutely understand what you're saying, and, and we have been working on trying to come up with solutions and moving forward with the project as well.
So I guess what I'd like is maybe just another update, you know, in the next couple months, you know, when the spring comes and the building, you know, because there was some excitement generally, and, and then it has tailed off between either just something new there as well as a park, and now it's just, there's a parking garage that everyone can see, and, and that's kind of it, right? So it'd be good if we can just sort of keep city council and the public up to speed. So that's all. Like, I'm not trying to be...
No, I think your concerns are very valid, and I'm more than happy to take those comments back. And, you know, we appreciate the partnership we've had with the city and want to make sure that we're giving the proper updates, and so I'm, I will be sure to get that.
And I'm sure they'll be able to guess which council member gave the suggestion, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Are there any other questions while I'm up here?
I have a question.
Yeah.
As someone who has a western, west-facing balcony, some of the concerns that I've heard from neighbors is the dust mitigation plan, a lot of dust being kicked up with the Zion's bank construction. Do you guys have a formal dust mitigation plan, other than, in the summertime, I know you guys were watering, which seemed to help a little bit, but now that that's not going to be happening, do you have any measures in place to keep that dust from going?
I'm sorry that I, I wouldn't want to answer one way or not, but I will absolutely get with our, excuse me, our construction team.
Okay.
Because if they, we did have one, they would be the ones managing that, and I'm happy to provide an update on that as well.
Okay.
But I know there's an approved plan. I also know that we have staff over there fairly regularly to ensure that those things are happening, but I will talk with our stormwater swift, the acronym's escaping me all of a sudden, inspector, and make sure that they're working with them in order to try to address those dust issues.
And it's hard to gauge, you know, I mean, Utah is a dusty state to begin with, so it's hard to gauge, like, you know, just putting stuff out on my own balcony. I'm like, well, how much of this dust is from construction and how much of this is from just regular what you would expect living in the state of Utah, so.
Absolutely. Would, I'd be happy to get you to the...
I appreciate that you guys are doing nothing. You know, there's some, something going on there. I would just like to be able to have a more educated conversation with people who have that concern.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we invite members of the public that would like to communicate on this with the city council, please come forward and state your We didn't have any online comments on this.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close a public hearing on item B. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. The public hearing is now closed on item B, and I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I move that we approve the final plat for the Jordan Bluffs' second amendment, amended, sorry, subdivision located in the vicinity of 7860 South Bingham Junction Boulevard with the findings and conditions as noted in the summary report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on the, or questions on the motion? Rory, would you ask the questions, please?
Yes, councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
And Sperry?
Aye.
That two passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now take care of the consent agenda, which is to consider the minutes of November 9, 2021.
Mayor, I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this motion? Rory?
Ah, councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
And Glover?
Aye.
Thank you. We now move into the action item part of the agenda. There are five items. The first is to consider resolution number 2021R35, a resolution canvassing the 2021 general municipal election. And our city recorder, come forward and give us the numbers.
Okay, I sent out an email. We didn't get the numbers until about four o'clock. So I sent out an email. Right as we started our meeting, this was an updated canvas statistics that we got. The first one that I sent out did not have the ballots that were not accepted. They had not calculated those yet. So this was the second email that I sent out. So as you can see, we had 15,868 eligible voters. The ballots counted were 4,484, and by mail ballots counted was 4,409. And you've got your ballots that were not accepted, and this meant that they were not signed. The signatures didn't match the voter record. The two ballots in one envelope, they didn't have any of those, two empty envelopes, and then one DC's voter. That's a problem. And, will you scroll? I can't see. Sorry. There you go, thanks. Okay, so, and then if they were marked invalid dates. They had 27 cure letters that were sent out, 16 were returned, and that was if they did not sign their ballot, then they are sent out the cure letter and they have the opportunity to sign it. So we had 27 of those with 16 returned. 75 people voted in person, kind of a slow day, actually. Two provisional ballots, two counted provisional ballots. Good job, Jake, keep going. Okay, keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, so we did have, as you know, we had a vote center here, and there were 22 total. Early vote, voting locations were six, number of vote centers, workers were 83. And our vote center workers actually like coming to Midvale because we give them lunch, just so you know. And then we had whatever the ICX machines deployed, those machines were deployed. So on the election resolution, you will see that I did change those after we received the votes, the total votes. Do you have the other ones, those other pages, by chance? Or even... Okay, that's okay. So the total votes received were four. Bryant Brown had a really, really, really tight race. 706 votes unopposed. So then we have Dustin Gettle in District 5 and Wayne Sharp. Dustin Gettle with 672, Wayne Sharp with 225. Then our ranked choice race was Marcus Stevenson ended up with 2,309, and Robert Hale, 2,108. Amanda Hollingsworth was eliminated in that process with the ranked choice voting because she didn't have enough votes. So that is what the results are. Are there any questions?
On that ranked choice, what does it mean when it says blanks and exhausted? What's that meaning on the report? I think the blanks...
Does that just mean they?
They didn't.
Didn't fill it in at all, or they didn't fill in like a second and third choice?
That is a really good question, and I'm not as familiar with ranked choice as what I should be, because it is new, but I would guess that that means they did not fill it in right.
I think the blanks were, so if, if you got a ballot and you didn't want to vote in the mayor's race for whatever reason, and then you just voted in one of the council races, then that would be a blank for the mayor's race.
And then, yeah, the exhausted is the, where they would have only voted for the person who was eliminated in the process.
Got it. Okay.
All these new things to learn with the ranked choice voting. Is there any other questions on that?
Rory, do you know the 75 that voted in person? So for the, I, I know the presidential election, for instance, I voted in Draper City Hall. Don't ask why. I, I still don't know why I did that, but I was there and I stopped in, I voted that day.
Yeah.
So the 75 people on this list, are they people who voted here in the Midvale race? They could have voted in any...
I don't know for sure. They could have voted anywhere.
Okay.
Just means that they voted in person that day?
Interesting.
Yeah. And, and as we, you have vote centers, it is easier this way than it used to be, where you can go anywhere you want. If you happen to be, like you said, in Draper, then you can stop and vote.
I don't recommend it.
Okay.
And I, I just want to echo what Dustin said earlier. I think it would be good if we could do sort of a post-op on ranked choice voting, because I think there was about, I think there was 21 options in Salt Lake County for ranked choice voting, and two of them didn't end up going to, to the first place, right? So like, if ranked choice voting didn't exist, 19 of the 21 would have ended the same. And the other two, I think, went to, to the second-place person, and it was like a close race. So we didn't have anything where, like, the seventh person in Sandy won, right, or something like that.
Yeah, totally.
So I think it'd be good, because there was, you know, we had some people come in that were very like, oh, my vote, one vote, one, you know, didn't count, or it's going to mess things up. And, and obviously, over time, we might have something screwy where there's seven people running in the third place or fourth place, but the math seems to work out that, you know, the, the person with the most votes through the initial rounds won, right? But I, I like it because it saves the, the city money, because you don't have to do the, the primary, right? And I also think it helps with voter, you know, fatigue or whatever. So, you know, if we can just put that on the, on the, whether it's, whether it's a workshop, I'd rather have it be in the public, so everyone can hear it, but...
And then probably the group who came to speak to us about ranked choice voting, I'm sure they're going to do some sort of county-wide kind of delving into the numbers, and perhaps they can come and...
Absolutely.
Go over those numbers with us.
Sure.
I had, I had mixed reviews from people. Some really liked it, some didn't, you know, probably similar to what we heard when we voted on it initially.
Yeah.
But I bet the, the individual who ran in Draper, who, for the two at-large spots, and he took second in both, he probably doesn't like it, which I thought was interesting, is the way that turned out.
But then there were some, like, mayor-elect Zoltansky, you know, she was outspoken against ranked choice voting, and it seemed to work just fine for her, so.
In Sandy?
Yeah.
I do know that I've talked to several older people, and they, they struggled with it, knowing, do I vote just for one person, or do I, what if I want to put the same person three times, or, I mean, they had all these questions, and they didn't understand what was going on. And I, obviously, I don't know what we did to promote and tell them what we did, but I guarantee you, I didn't get anything in my home to tell me how to do it.
We did have some things that were on our website, and we also had some other meetings and things.
But, I mean, these older people are in care centers, they're not looking at websites.
No, that's true.
Okay, literally. I mean, they're just asking me questions, how do you even mark the ballot? And I do a lot with the care center down there.
And that's why I think like a post discussion, right, alleviates some of that worry. And then, you know, if, and that group might be like, hey, there were some people that, you know, voted in a way that, you know, might have disqualified their ballot. I don't know if that happened or not, right?
It very possibly could, being new like this, there's...
Like if ever, they put one for all, you know, all three mayors or something like that, and that could have messed something up or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we did hold the one meeting over at the senior center, tried to get the senior center, had the ranked choice voting come out with that.
Well, but you got to understand where I'm going, these people aren't going to the senior center. They live and they don't leave that facility.
They live in the centers. Yeah, absolutely.
So, I, I mean, there's some good, but there's some real problems.
I would be interested to find out if there's any sort of expert opinion why, you know, as I mentioned in my report, you know, Bryant and I in our districts, there have never, never been more voters, more cast votes in our districts. So then why was, you know, the overall mayor's race down from four years ago?
And that could be because it was confusing, because there was three, instead of just two people to vote for. So they're used to seeing two, now they had a third. That would be my guess, is that they didn't really know how to use the ranked choice voting.
Interesting.
And I, and I just want to say for a second, I'm very proud of District Four, because as we found out last week, I have like 5,000 less people than District Five, but we only had 40 less voters, right? So that's, you know, I kind of want to find the 160 people that didn't, that didn't fill in my bubble, like the protest voters, but...
156, I counted.
Yeah, but no, no one's counting.
I did.
156?
Yeah.
That didn't, but, yeah, so for me, it was a good turnout, and we, I didn't have as much build or anything, right, between the two elections, so it's interesting.
What was the number again of just ballots, or do we not have this? So someone who voted improperly or incorrectly, I should say, in the mayor's race, how many?
Oh, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly.
We need to get those numbers, like someone who voted, you know, for Mayor Hale, one, two, and three.
Yeah.
And then the whole ballot was not counted.
I'm not completely impressed with the information that I got this year from, it seems to be a lot more in-depth when it was not the ranked choice voting. And we get it very last minute, and so we don't have a lot of time to ask questions.
Because right now, these numbers, I mean, we're used to seeing these numbers.
Right.
This is not anything to do with ranked choice voting. It's just the kind of...
Right, these are just the vote.
Normal errors that people make.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, that's one argument, too. I mean, you know, these, we get these errors without ranked choice voting, you know, every year we see these numbers. So people can incorrectly fill out their ballot with a traditional, non-ranked choice race.
I was impressed with the different kinds of objections to ranked choice voting that I found before they got their ballot and after they got their ballot. Before they got their ballot, people said, ah, this will be easy. After they got their ballot, then they were confused.
Oh, really?
They didn't know, what if I just want to vote for one of you? You can do that. Do I have to vote for all three? No. But did they? I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
You know, they were confused much more after the ballots came out than before the ballots came out.
Right.
So there's some education that we've got to promote more than we have this year.
Absolutely.
To explain it, if this is to continue to be the system we use.
Right.
Thank you.
Real quick, there's the note at the bottom that the tie is resolved in accordance with election law, so what is ours? Is ours flip a coin?
Yep.
Just curious.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I don't think Bryant or I are going to make it.
I move to approve resolution number 2021R35, accepting and approving the results of the municipal general election held November 2, 2021, as shown on the canvas report. So well done by Rory.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Before we vote, is there any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, Rory?
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Ed Robinson?
Yes.
Could I have you assign this certification for me, please?
What if we abstain now?
What?
What if we abstain at this point?
You didn't abstain.
I hope that last little bit gets in the...
Oh, thank you, okay.
Can embellish it if you'd like.
I, I won't do now, thank you.
Can I use your pen? Dustin and Wayne, 12, didn't vote. I know, there's a lot to vote.
Again, we want to congratulate the winners in this first-ever ranked choice vote here Our next action item is to consider ordinance 2021O22, and ordinance approving and adopting the amendments made to the projected area plans for the Bingham Junction RDA, Jordan Bluffs RDA, and Main Street CDA. Come on, Kate, give us an interview idea what we're voting on here.
Well, it's the exact same as the board saw last week. So last week, the board approved the changes that were proposed to the project area plans. And the next step in adopting those plans is to have city council approve those planned amendments. amendments. And then, just to kind of kill two birds with one stone, I also am going to present on the resolution that will allow the agency to transfer the $1.5 million from the Bingham Junction area to the Midvale Main Street CDA, which was one of the catalysts in bringing these amendments forth.
That's Item C on the agenda.
Correct. Yes, and I shall also note that the $1.5 million transfer from Bingham Junction to the Main Street area was previously approved by City Council in the fiscal year 2022 budget. And so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Okay?
We're good, Kate, thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
A motion, number O-22 first.
Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2021-O-22, an ordinance approving and adopting the amendments made to the project area plans for the Bingham Junction RDA, Jordan Bluffs RDA, and Main Street CDA.
Second.
Motion is second on Action Item B. Any comments or questions on that? Rory?
Councilmember Gettle.
Yes.
Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on Item C, please.
Mayor, I also move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-R-36, a resolution approving the transfer of funds from the Bingham Junction RDA to the Main Street CDA to fund the revolving loan program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Item C. Any discussion or questions on that? Rory?
Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now move to Item D, to consider Resolution 2021-R-37, a resolution identifying and approving the implementation of employee retention measures.
Okay, as we have discussed previously, we had about a 33% turnover rate this last year. It was really big. It's been a little challenging to get employees. We want to make sure that we keep those that we have. And there's a bug right here.
That's not helping employee retention.
Concentrate, I'm sorry, it was a bug.
It's a health infested.
Get the bug.
Can we get an exterminator in here, Matt?
Sorry, okay. So, with the, trying to, gosh, now I got to get my mind back. Trying to keep the employees that we have, as we have, field out of nine positions, we, we still have about five that are open, so we have talked about this in the past. We are recommending that we have two personal time off days. So we do have vacation and sick leave, these will be called PTO. PTO days that we would offer the employees that they'd have to use between now and May 1st, 2022. And this is to kind of give them a little bit of time off, get their heads on straight if they are having any stress, kind of give them a little bit of time off. The other thing that we'd like to do is, over the years, and a lot of this came out in public safety, I know that UPD does this, UFA does this, and they have a certain timeframe when you get topped out. We don't have that here. We would like to move our employees to the midpoint line within four years of them being in their positions. So they would have to be in the position, of course, if they moved to another position, they'd have to be in that position. At the four-year mark, they should be at midpoint. So we'd like to be able to move them, the employees that have been here, to midpoint as of January 1, 2022. That would cost approximately $97,200, so we'd put this in a resolution to be approved as we had talked to you before. And then we would also add that policy to our personnel manual that would say within the four years of in a position that they would reach their midpoint. And we're hoping that that's going to keep the employees here a little bit longer. If they're making enough money, they're not going to want to leave. We do have some that not, they don't leave just because of money, but that does, it does tend to be a factor in some cases. So we're hoping to do that. The other thing that we would like to do is, those employees that are currently hired within Midvale, and they are here, still here, as of June 1st of 2022, will receive a $1,000 bonus. That is going to cost the city at about $102,000 because, as Kyle pointed out to me tonight, that we also have to pay a URS on that. So it's not just the $1,000, but it's, we don't have 100 employees, but we do have to pay URS on that $1,000 bonus. That is our recommendation, are there any questions?
So I see the fiscal impact on the moving it to the four-year midpoint. That's just covered through the savings because
That is covered through savings now.
What about on the bonus? Is that also coming from that savings or are we bringing it from fund balance?
No, what, what administration will be proposing when we do budget amendments is use some of prior year surplus to cover that as a one-time cost.
And that, that is a one-time deal, that's not an ongoing. Unless you'd like to make it ongoing. Any other questions?
Rory, I know at the end of our workshop discussion on this, Glenn mentioned something about
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, so as far as accruing your time off, someone who's in the URS system who comes to Midvale and then they start at year one, whereas, you know, if they worked at Sandy for 20 years, you know, there was the discussion of how we treat those employees, like do we, do we negotiate with them and say, you'll start earning six hours per paycheck?
We haven't yet.
Okay. Because I thought that was a good idea that Glenn suggested and that's what really blew me away. Because I think
Yeah, I get that.
You know, if, I was just kidding. So if we transfer, you know, working at the state, if I transfer from the Health Department to the Department of Natural Resources, I don't lose, you know, the, the four or five hours per paycheck that I get as far as time off. So I think that that's reasonable to do as far as employees who are coming from URS to URS.
The
Matt has something to say.
Yeah, first I want to say that Glenn is a very valued member of the staff who has been taking some slings and arrows in different meetings throughout the day, so since that has continued, I just want to point out.
I did not know about that.
No, I know. But that Glenn comes up with a lot of good ideas. Where we got stuck on this one a little bit, and we'll continue to work on it because I do think that it is an important issue, but came down to some of these, how to account for people who are not in the URS system in order to make that fair across the board? Because then we get into some issues of like, if I've been working since I'm 16, but I'm not in the URS system, does that count towards time? And if it doesn't, how do we start to define what counts as a job that's not in the URS system that would count towards the number of years? And while I think there's a solution to it, we just have not come up with one yet that resolves those issues of equity.
Yeah, and I guess the, the point would be, you know, if you're attracting a candidate from another city who's done a very similar, specific job, you know, that would be quite a difference than someone, you know, who's worked, you know, outside of a government agency for 20 years.
Right.
So, yeah, I see where you're coming from on that. But, you know, if someone with that wealth of experience were to say, yes, I'll take this job, but I want, you know, six hours instead of four for paycheck, is our policy now to negotiate that and, and maybe consider it or to just say, absolutely not, we have a hard line in the sand?
At this point, we're not negotiating accrual.
We do, however, negotiate maybe upfront. So we are able to, Adam and Vindalin might still be here because they just moved over. We do negotiate the upfront vacation, not the accrual, but the upfront, so they could come over with a couple of weeks of that. The one thing that I did not fail to go over, which is for Glenn's department, and that is the, when the on-call employees have a holiday during the week that they are on call, it has not been counted as time worked. And we are recommending that it be counted as time worked for overtime purposes. And that is a benefit for the public works employees. So right now, it's not counted as time worked, but we would recommend that it is.
So just like standard time right now?
Correct. Right now, they'd have to work an additional 10 hours during that week to get time and a half for overtime.
So you're like a short-staffed holiday pay, essentially, like for
Kind of holiday pay, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that. I think it's crappy to work on holidays.
Yeah, and, and on-call is hard as it is. So for them not to get time and a half or the time they have to come out, especially around holidays, it's
It seems to always happen. Easter, I don't know if it's because the water is thawing or what, but like every Easter there's a water main break on my road, I swear, and they're out there.
I think they wait for the holidays.
Yeah, maybe they, maybe they don't want, maybe they don't want an awkward Thanksgiving conversation, so they sabotage it, maybe that's it. But yeah, I'm on for the holiday pay.
Okay, any other questions on this?
So if, if it was, it's, okay, so it's holiday pay, but if that were to fall on a holiday, would it be like some astronomical four times
No.
the pay for that?
No, if, if they actually work the holiday, it's double time, they get their pay and they get the, the holiday pay as well. This is for overtime purposes, so that they don't have to make up that 10 hours that they lost for a holiday if they didn't have to work.
Okay.
You know, so, but they had, were on-call, so they had to be, they had certain restrictions.
Because if so, I'm more than willing to be on-call for you guys. On holidays only.
On your Christmas.
Kate, anything else?
Okay, a motion?
I don't see the motion. Mayor, I, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2021-R-37, a resolution identifying and approving the implementation of employee retention measures.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Rory?
Okay, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
And Sperry?
Aye.
I just want to thank you
You did a good job.
too. I really appreciate you doing this, the employees are going to appreciate it as well.
Yeah. Okay, one final action item, Consider Resolution 2021-R-38, a resolution authorizing a board member to receive compensation for service on the Board of Directors of the Utah Local Governments Trust. Matt?
I think the, the description you read pretty much sums it up. This is a resolution that we have, this board has approved in the past. Just as a quick reminder, the mayor is serving on the board for the Utah Local Governments Trust as a, he was requested to serve on it by the trust, but this is not a position that he is in because he is the mayor of Midvale. I just bring that up in that, as you look at sort of, as we discuss in the memo, that we have been comfortable in the past with him serving on that board and receiving compensation for it because it is a part-time position that is in addition to what he has compensated for in fulfilling the role as mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but like I said, the description pretty well covers it.
I might add that I am, I am a representative of mayors in the state of Utah on that board, not a representative of Midvale in particular, just mayors generally. And there are two mayors that serve on that board, one from large city offices like ours and one from a small rural city office. Actually, there's two from small offices, so one of three mayors that serve on the board.
So Matt, is this a board that, I'm just getting a little confused by it now. So Mayor Hale currently serves on it, but in the capacity as not Midvale mayor. So do we have someone who is permanently
No.
expected to be? Okay.
We do not.
So, yeah, I'm a little confused. That didn't help, that made me more confused at this point.
On the Local Government Trust, that's the insurance?
That's right.
So it's basically an insurance company?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know what they, yeah, I get what they do, but I don't
So they're going to pick another mayor in January, is that
Yeah.
what'll happen?
Yeah. I don't, actually, I don't know. There may be a period of time beyond my tenure as a mayor that I serve until there's an annual meeting at which time I would be replaced.
Okay. But that is, that is a function of that board to make the decision of when that transition needs to occur. Sorry, I was just trying to make clear earlier on that this distinguishing between a role that is like a normal board that the mayor is going to be on representing Midvale as a requirement, so.
But in 2022, or there's no guarantee that Midvale will have anyone
That's correct.
on this board. So therefore, we wouldn't be paying anyone. Then if in 2024 or whatever, we do get another member of the board, then this ordinance would cover them to be
We would have to do it again.
Yeah, it's an annual
So what's
We're not paying him.
Sorry, that's a solid point.
The city is not compensating me for time spent.
So the, the only point of this ordinance is to compensate Mayor Hale for his
I'm sorry.
time and efforts.
Let me re-clarify that.
Isn't it?
The trust pays, is paying this. But what we're asking for in here
I'm going to go home.
is to say that it is okay for the mayor to receive that compensation from that board.
Can I, why wouldn't it be?
Well, can I comment? This has been happening for years and they just passed the law a couple of years ago that said, if any elected official, or I guess anybody that's going and serving on these types of boards, they now have to come to the City Council for us to just acknowledge and approve, okay, we're, we're fine with them serving and being compensated, even though they were being compensated by this other entity. So that, again, it's been happening for years, they just changed the law to make it more transparent.
I'm going to use my favorite word, governmenty.
Yeah.
And this is governmenty at its core.
Sometimes I'm like, do I over-explain this or under-explain it? I misjudged this evening. I should have done a little bit more on that, I'm sorry.
You did great.
Just have Glenn explain it next time.
Yeah. Councilman Gettle?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions?
Many about this, but I'm gonna, I, I understand more now, but it also just seems like a complete waste of our time to do it. Like, of course, it's fine for the mayor to accept compensation for his time on an outside board that we have no control over and may never have another person on that board.
I like that summary.
Well described.
Governmenty.
Yes, governmenty for sure.
Any other questions? Let's get this one behind us.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2021-R-38, a resolution authorizing a board member to receive compensation for service on the Board of Directors of the Utah Local Governments Trust.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on this item. Any discussion or questions now? All right, Rory?
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
And Glover?
Aye.
Rory?
Governmenty.
A copy of this resolution. Once it's, yeah, it's got to go to the trust now.
Okay, I'll send it to
Okay, we have one discussion item, 2022 council meeting schedule.
This is the most we've seen, Rory.
I know, I never get up until all the fire guys come, so, you know, I can be embarrassed. So, okay. So thanks for that. Steve. Okay, 2022 calendar. August for, the bug is back and I don't have a paper, okay. August, we have the 9th and the 23rd, which is a little bit different because of harvest days. So we do the 9th and 23rd. And then we do December, the 6th and the 13th, unless anybody wants to have a council meeting closer to Christmas, which we usually don't. So we, we've left it the same, the first and the third, first and third Tuesdays, workshop at 6, pre-meeting workshop, and then the 7 o'clock regular meeting. And then we've got our mayor pro tem schedule. Would anyone like to change their spot or do they like where they're at? Do you want me to go through that? at? Do you want me to go through that? Quinn, you have January, February, Dustin, March, and April. Uh, Quinn, you get a second shot at May and June.
I'm so excited.
I know. And Bryant, you have July and August, Heidi, September, October, and Paul, November, December. Are you good with those? Okay, the, uh, holidays, we've left as they are. I did put the wrong date for Juneteenth, we don't know what the state's gonna do with that yet, that's actually the 19th, not the 17th, but we do not know yet what the state's going to do with the Juneteenth holiday. My last instruction from the council was to wait and see what the legislature does, are you still good with that?
Yep.
See if you have it on the day, or it's recognized. And we have the other holidays the same, as we've had in the past. Are there any questions? And then, of course, with the MBA and the RDA, those meetings just follow, uh, regular council meetings, so we will have a meeting in December to adopt those meeting schedules as well. Am I okay to put this on consent? Okay?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody, thanks Fire-Fire, good to see you here.